Fudge please.
Fudge to the United States of America and to the Republic of Japan. One nation under God, indivisible,天地无疆， justice for all.
invocation, invocation please.
You're in the Father, thank you for this time, for this time, we all can eat tonight, tonight. As we come to you tonight, your blessing, your blessing to our community and our council. Keep us all safe, spirits, be with those that are needed, and we pray.
Thank you, thank you. Roll call please.
Tim Brown, Tim Brown.
Here, here.
Richard Hill, Richard Hill.
Here, here.
Deborah Hendrickson.
Here, here.
Richard Hill, Richard Hill.
Here, here.
Josie Lee, Josie Lee.
Here.
Everyone's here, everyone's here.
Alright, alright. Um, um. Do we have an organization? Election of President Secretary for the year? Are there any nominations for President?
I'd like to nominate, nominate Mr. Hill.
Alright, alright. For the Board of.
No, no, finance, okay, okay.
Yeah, yeah.
What's going on?
I'll second, I'll second.
Alright, alright. Um, um, there's one nomination, for the nominations. Alright, hearing none, voice vote. All those, all those. Voting for Richard Hill, say aye.
Aye, aye.
Alright, alright. Eyes have it, eyes have it? Mr. Hill's elected, why is the board funding that? Secretary for Finance. Are there any nominations?
Late Tim Brown.
He right off the bat.
Jump right in there, baby.
She better at it.
Um, um, are there any other nominations? Hearing none, call for a vote. Voice vote, voice vote, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye, aye.
Um, minutes from January ten, twenty twenty three. We don't have any issues now, those minutes.
Did you, did you?
Those out, those out.
Is this the board finance meeting?
The finance, the finance.
They see the embassy.
The last, the last. Um, um. Whoa, whoa.
Damn that, damn that.
From the last, from the last.
Couldn't table that until next, next meeting.
Have another finance meeting?
Yeah, yeah.
Favorite, favorite.
Is there a motion to continue that matter, that matter over to a finance meeting? To occur at our next council?
Subsumed, subsumed.
Second, uh, second.
Second it, yeah.
And related to that. To avoid having to do it. Finance meeting, instead of a journey, I would recommend that we just leave the meeting.
Recession, recession. Okay, okay. Um, um. All, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye, aye.
Okay, we'll continue that over.
My, my.
Um, um, okay. Um, um. Investments and two-year and older checks, do we have anything on that? Yeah, I thought, I thought we don't have any investments.
Statute, statute says annual medium, we're supposed to have it, but if there's no investment. Need to make sure, need to make sure we reflect that, that, sorry. No investments, need to reflect in the minute that there, that there was a, was a confirmation. Confirmation.
Okay, and we did receive that, right. Okay, okay.
Do I have a question on?
So, so.
Can we entertain investments or something? Do we have like surplus money that potentially we could get five percent CD instead of percent? Something, I mean, do we have anything like that?
I, I mean, that would be, that would be a very much a finance question. I don't know, and there's very strict rules as far as investments. Um, whether or not, be in our interest or not, is not a question that I could answer. Um, generally, generally, even if you do municipal financial investment, because there are strict rules. I think you normally do that as an advisor. Mr. Watson.
Yeah, I would want you to advise, advise you're gonna do that. And simple answer is yes, you can, you can invest your money. But you need to make sure that you know your cash flow and so forth, so forth. Restrict, restrict, bail bill.
We're currently getting four percent in checking accounts.
Oh, really? Oh, really?
Yes.
Okay, that's not bad, that's not bad.
Um, um. Alright, in that case, is there a motion to continue or recess this meeting until? Or for February town? February town? Town Council meeting?
Joe, I may have missed it, I'm sorry.
Do you hold?
Checks, or do we have any, do we have any of those that we need to do, we need to do anything with?
Not at this point, at this point.
Thank you, thank you.
Um, is there a motion to recess this meeting? Until February 10th? The date of which, or no?
Give me a second, give me a second.
Thirteen, thirteen.
Okay, okay.
Seven o'clock.
February thirteen, at seven o'clock. PM here.
Make a motion for recess till the next, the next.
Is there a second?
I'll second, I'll second.
Alright, there's a motion, there's a second and a second and, and, um. Acclamation, please. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye, aye.
All those opposed? Alright, we're in recess. In that case, I will call to. Mean of the White House Town Council for January nine, twenty twenty four.
We publish this at seven fifteen.
Yeah, yeah. Um, um.
Technically, you should, not burying. Technically, we're seven minutes. Probably here, probably here. But, but, that's your call. Headed away, headed away. Gentlemen, again.
Probably to be on the same side. Some doesn't, some doesn't, at some point, some would avoid. Fractions were taken in the next seven minutes. We should probably just. So, I'm not gonna call, sorry, sorry.
Wait till seven fifteen, for what reason?
To open the doors, the quires, that we not start. We publish the knowledge. Pardon, pardon?
Is that, is that?
No, because the finance starts and so.
Okay, okay, okay.
Yeah, just a January.
This board of finances take care of.
I'm sorry. My part here.
The board of finance take care of.
It's primarily just, uh, the duties of Secretary. It's the management of financial investments and we don't. So it's something that we have to do. They all require us. But really no, really no. There's really no business. But they didn't, they didn't. They didn't descend. I mean, I got, I got.
Check, check. Make sure. I'll go get my recorder.
It's, uh, it's, uh.
Mess nothing up.
It's a resume pattern.
Thank you. Just being me.
Member haze.
Yeah, there you go.
Oh, I'm sorry, yeah, it's only, yeah. There's not much to, not much to.
Okay, okay.
That's short requirement. I guess, I guess, anything, anything.
Okay, okay.
I'm not easy, I'm not easy.
No, no. He's sitting, he's sitting.
He's easy, he's easy.
Daddy, daddy. Daddy, daddy.
Thank you, thank you. Coming out, coming out, coming out. Bouncing between, bouncing between.
Mm-hmm, mm-hmm.
Who are these, who are these people?
I don't know, I don't know. Miss there, miss there.
Yeah, you know it's my core five. Shouldn't be, shouldn't be.
I'll just add it to it, it should be. Is it that way?
On your, on your.
Okay. We changed the name. I'll just, I'll just add it to. This phone in my, in my.
Okay, okay. So just send everything to White House now.
Yeah, yeah. I live that way, I live that way too, so. Cause I've got, cause I've got the new wife now. I do their, I do their review, review. So, so. Help me if I'd come and help. So I do all the, all the, stuff like that.
You know how I hate that.
General, what's on the board? No, EM John, EM John.
Turning red, turning red.
You don't like me, I can't.
Whatever, whatever.
I don't have a camera, one camera over there. Oh, really? Oh, really?
No, no, it's not, it's not.
Funny, funny.
Mm-hmm, mm-hmm.
That's, that's a big undertaking. There's just so much, so much in my mind.
Said it all, said it all.
I don't, my friends.
Get worked out, get worked out.
I know, but we have, I know, we have a start.
Right, somewhere.
I know, I know. She's on, she's on.
Undertaking.
She owns it, she owns it. Place, place.
Right, and right, and like I said, like I said, I done heard, I done heard.
One more, one more.
You know, I do know.
Talk, talk.
On the wild land. Funny, funny. Redesigning, redesigning.
So you probably, you know, put a man or something.
Maybe, maybe if we can get it where we want it.
Yeah, yeah.
The, the, the cherry, cherry in December. The, the.
I done, I done, I talked to. After, after. Because, because. The ones who are definitely against you might be, might be worth. Into, into.
Well, cause yeah, well, cause yeah, it's intimate, trying to take, trying to take. Far from the case, it's not, it's not. It's like, yeah, that would be a better place. They had, they had, you know, one, one.
Dear, dear. Core five, core five.
No, you can get that back in there, back in there. No, no. Restraits, restraits. So.
You know, blue, red, red.
You got anything about it, it's all good.
If, if, well, you know, well, you know.
Is that, is that? Anything, anything?
Just, just.
Like they're really, like they're really syrup. And stuff like that, but the water's out.
I'm sorry, they didn't like, they didn't like it. They didn't like, they didn't like it. Have they seen, have they seen this?
Just one, just one.
Yeah, yeah. Hundred percent.
No, they're, they're.
That's what I'm saying. She's got, she's got.
I disagree.
Okay, so that's, so that's.
Over one, over one. Alright, alright. I'm counting, I'm counting. County, 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 twenty-four. I'm, I'm done the pledge, done the pledge. You'll be okay, I'm not, I'm not. Someone feels differently. We do roll call please?
Yes, sir.
Tim Brown, Tim Brown.
Here, here.
Victor, Victor. Deborah Hendrickson.
Here, here.
Here, here.
Here, here. Doctor, doctor, you're in the business. Day, um, it's my understanding that ongoing discussion. I know they've been, I know they've been. That core five has asked to be scheduled also because of medical issues. Does anyone have any issues with that from tonight's agenda? And to, to. Are there any other additions, additions, additions in order? Alright, hearing none, our next order is reorganization, council. Um, and we don't, I'm not gonna ask for a nomination to. Or I'm sorry, or I'm sorry. Motion to reorganize, I'm just going to step down. Effective on the election, my replacement. Um, as a council president. So I believe that opens, um, the. Opens reorganization automatically. Um, are there nominations? I'm sorry, Mr. Hill, are you stepping down as vice president? Now, one motion as far as reorganization as vice president.
I'll step down, I'll step down.
Okay, so both those seats now sit vacant, vacant will. Vacated upon election successor. Um, are there any nominations for the position of council president?
I'd like to put my name in the hat for that position, for me.
Mr. Hill has nominated himself. Are there nominations? Alright, alright, hearing none, being uncontested. All those in favor, Richard Hill, council president, say aye.
Aye, aye.
All those opposed? Alright, there are none. Um, as to the matter of vice president. Seated vice president.
Tim, you might as well step up, man. I'll nominate Tim Brown.
Alright, alright. Richard Hill, Richard Hill, Tim Brown, for the position of vice president. Are there any other nominations? Alright, hearing none, just do a voice, vote on the matter of vice president. Um, all those in favor, Tim Brown, for the position of vice president, say aye.
Aye, aye.
All those opposed? Alright, hearing none, hearing none.
Thank you.
Chair's yours, sir.
Okay, okay. Thank you, everybody, for the nomination. Don't let anybody down. Continue this meeting, so going into the next phase of the complex disclosures.
We had a, we had a minute.
Morning, morning.
I believe, I believe.
Mr. Croy.
We just made a, made a present that for the.
Yes, sir, yes, sir.
Today, written, informed conflict, informed statement, statement from Tyler Croy. Croy, police sergeant, town, town. Providing an annual disclosure in relation to contractor, TFCX. SBXC solution. Customs, customs. Description of the contract is CFC. To the government, to the government. Clue, but not limited to. IP service, security equipment. Description of the financial interest is that TFC will derive and profit from the goods and services. Fight it to. It gets understood that Tyler Croy owned that company. And, and, and that's all that, all that, righted and signed by Alec Roy.
I would make a motion, I would have to accept this conflict disclosure.
I'll second it, I'll second it. Brad first, and then Mr. Sailor second. Dick Roque, please.
Tim Brown, Tim Brown.
Yes, yes.
Yes, Richard Hill, Richard Hill.
Yes, yes.
Yes, yes.
The next item, the next item is the meeting minutes from December twelve, twenty twenty three. Anybody have any questions, got the meeting minutes at all?
I have one question, so I wasn't up here. I've read them, I've read them. Does that give me the right, say yes, or no? Or do I have to?
Ian, I would recommend in this context, if you have others, if you have others that can vote, get a pass, get a pass. You just abstain, just abstain.
That's what I thought, that's what I thought. Read them anyway, just the case, thank you, thank you.
Good question, good question.
Good stuff, good stuff.
A second, a second?
I'll second, I'll second.
Do a roll call? May I ask a question? So, do, do, do we have to do a roll call every time? Or, I think, Joe, you always said acclimation vote? Is that quicker, is that easier, is that better?
You're not required to do a roll call vote? Um, if anyone, if anyone knows differently, no, but be confident, be confident in this case. Um, and, and, but that's been kind of the general practice of the council. Of the council, to do that, now if there's a voting dance, minutes should reflect. Who is voting against, and that sort of thing, and it is, and it is generally quicker. Um, to do oral motions and votes without it being a vote necessarily. But that's, but that's to you and the council, how you decide.
I generally just called for an acclamation. If it was a matter that it seemed like there was unlikely to be any issue of someone against or abstaining. If someone was gonna like to vote against or stand. For a roll call, so that it was memorialized.
Okay. Thank you for the clarification. I apologize for that. Can we do a roll call, vote, please?
Tim Brown, Tim Brown.
Stay, stay.
Richard Hill, Richard Hill. Deborah Hendrickson, yes. Richard Hill, Richard Hill.
Yeah, yeah.
Yes, yes.
Joe, thanks for that clarification.
Certainly, certainly.
Moving on to the voucher packet, twenty-nine, twenty-four. Would, for clarification, would this hold true for Mr. Brown? Since he wasn't here, or how does that work?
Talking about, talking about claims?
Do they, do they, are they still, are they still, they should still vote on this?
The claims, I would recommend, recommend that Mr. Brown vote on that.
Okay, okay.
He has opportunity to claim, to claim, just like anybody else. It's a different.
Okay, alright, thank you, alright, thank you. Anybody have any questions, or motion on about the packet?
I'll move, Joe. About your packet. Uh, December twelve, sorry. About your packet.
You have a second, you have a second?
A second, a second.
Mr. Sailor, Mr. Brown? Take a roll call.
Yes, yes.
Victor, Victor. Deborah Hendrickson.
Yes, yes.
Richard Hill, Richard Hill.
Yeah, yeah.
Yes, yes.
Pass five to zero.
Thank you, thank you. Uh, next item is the financial report. Be on behalf of that, or the combination, whichever is.
What's her, what's it says?
Just read operating balances.
Operating balances.
Yeah, no, no. Fund report. The general fund.
All funds, balance, balance, hundred sixty-two thousand five dollars, seventy-one cents.
Water, water.
Operating, is five hundred, five hundred, one fifty-five thousand, seven hundred and forty-three dollars and cents, seventy-seven cents. Work, work. Eight hundred and forty-one thousand, two hundred and fifty-two dollars and cents. No store, no store. What else?
Water improvement.
Three minutes, three minutes, five hundred and four thousand, six hundred and seventy-five. Three hundred and sixty-six thousand, nine hundred and ten dollars, ten dollars and cents.
December settlement.
Settlement, settlement.
Yeah, that'd be on your revenue, on your revenue report.
I'll have it, I'll have it.
It's fine, it's fine. It's all brand new, we've got some leeway here.
So the last page then? Holders. Have any, have any reports?
No, 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 the last page is everything. Our December settlement of general property tax was two hundred and fifty thousand, four hundred and eighty-seven dollars. And then, of course, there was some that went into financial institution tax. Some went into license excise tax. Some went into C VET.
Who you looking at?
On the front page.
Oh, on the front page.
So it says revenue today at the top. That's all the money we received in the month of December. And the fire department got their money. N V H.
It was less than, it was less than.
Settlement, settlement.
Is that pretty much, that's pretty much covered? Thank you for, thank you for helping out, helping out. From the financial league, do we do a, a vote? Past, past, past the information purposes? Next item on business. Ordance twenty-four dash oh one, pending the town purchase. Carmen, Carmen?
The blue and blue under one, under one, so the items and the items that we would like are doing in our revenue. Another Russian discussion last month, last month. The main thing, the main thing is that now, now I'll just identify, identify as the town manager, manager. And do, and do, for the, for the, that also. For the major, big, major operation, operations. What's the rest of the taxes?
Is, is, did we have something in place or not in place?
I'll give you a little background from my standpoint.
I think the, I think the, uh, uh,
I guess the town code was a little bit gray.
Gray in terms of, in terms of the authority, authority of town manager to make expenditures, that sort of thing. And, and it's also gray as to when you approve a budget or appropriation. What does that mean in terms of department heads, their authority to spend within, spend within? And, and there's been a practice where it was in the budget, town manager was assumed to have the authority to spend it. Um, um, I think there was also a practice that had a certain threshold that brought to the, brought to the council.
To avoid, to avoid continuing with this greatness.
It was thought best to go ahead and clarify in the town code, the levels of authority and, and so forth. And who, and who, what authority. That's what I'm saying. So that's the genesis, genesis of this ordinance.
Okay, okay. Just one other clarification, Carmen. So I apologize for going back and forth. So we've kind of updated potentially the like, with different groups of individuals? Yourself, Tim, Slim, I'm sorry, police and so forth. So is, so is, yeah, you're Tim.
Yeah.
So, so is what proposes each area have, have a $50,000 limit? Is that where we're headed?
Yes, they purchase.
So potentially, potentially, in a month, we can have a $200,000.
If the stars align, we could have a $200,000 purchase.
Through the budget process.
Okay, okay. Just, just clarifying.
I think it's only three, right?
It would be, it would be, it would be, it would be, yes.
It would be three, two.
If there's a town manager, please choose. If there's not a town manager, it would be directors, administrators.
Okay, okay.
I have a question. I did research after I got my packaging all several places. There's no one around that offers $50,000 spending. In, in Edberg, it's 25,000 that many town managers can spend. Uh, do you guys have an emergency plan? Like where I work? We don't have to authorize it to council. See, it steps up, we take care, we take care of it. Back to the water, some like that. Is that set up for here? So it's the same thing. The only thing, the only thing that I, I just thought $50,000 was a lot of money to say, yeah, you can spend. It's not that I don't want you guys to be able to spend any money. I just thought $50,000 was a lot higher than I would have thought. Cause I did, and I did a lot of research on other companies and stuff like that. And that's there too. And, and a lot of the companies that I called, a lot of towns, they're spending, it was 10 grand. And, and like over where I work, we all, we all supervisors carry credit cards with $2,500 max amount. And that's what we're allowed to spend without council approval. Because we're just supervisors now. The man out, the man in, they carry it different, like you and Slim and Rick and the fire chief who carry a different amount. And that's how, and that's how they did it. And I was just curious if that $50,000 just seemed like a lot of money. Be able to just throw out, throw out and, I mean, I'm not trying to make anything. I'm new to the board, so I'm just trying to get a feel for what happens.
I had a different tier option to start with, but it wasn't anything close. But I believe, but I believe that, you know, this is, this is reduction, reduction. Um, um, there's another, um, that's one of the, that's one of the calls.
Cause I would be, I would be, I guess I would be more comfortable with, with anywhere from 10 to 20 than I would be a 50. And I'm only one person. And that's my concern, putting that out there. That with 50 grand, that's a lot of money, what can be spent. You know, in an emergency situation, there's nothing, anyone can do about it. You have to spend the money. I do understand that 100%, but I mean, I think, I think with, with you, you just put the prison, everything, I think most people up here work pretty tight with you guys. And you guys can always hold to someone, something, even if they probably need something. So I just thought that number just struck me as a little odd. So that's why I called, to make sure, before I introduced it to you guys.
How did we come up with the $50,000?
Well, well, it was, that was the amount in the statute. That's the threshold in the statute for a small purchase policy. Statute defines small purchases. And you can have a small purchase policy up to $50,000. That's the ceiling. And so that, I think was where that number had come from. Um, I think initially, I had suggested a number somewhere around 20,000, 30,000. And then, and then, um, a majority of the council indicated that they wanted to go higher than 50. And then I think at the end of last meeting, a majority of the council indicated that they wanted to go 70. So that was, so that was where it ended at, ended at the last meeting. But it was, um, those weren't, I'm sorry, the director of administration or the director of operations numbers. Those were the numbers in council.
What did you have, Carmen?
I had, and had, and you were, you were the senior, so you were.
I didn't have that, I'm sorry.
I had, 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 uh, uh, the, the less than 10,000 authorized, authorized purchasing object without any additional, any additional, we need 25,000. The people would need, um, uh, uh, approval by the council president. I've got it scratched out. Um, 25, 25 would need approved, need approved by the council, the council 25, 25.
I like that a lot better.
I need to, I need to.
I think that just carries it all, and you can help them to something that they need more of, then they can go straight to you and I have to.
Why I could call, why I could call, because I, 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 I thought it was asset-based general purchasing, purchasing. I had conversations with my back, I apologize for similar goose chase. Um, and maybe that, maybe that needs to be what you just mentioned up, maybe that's a little bit more appropriate, especially for, maybe a new change in ordinance? It's always subject to change. We find out that maybe it's bottlenecking a process or something. We could always, we could always.
Revisit.
Revisit it? Is that something that would be entertained?
I would like to see what you propose. And then, like Richard said, if something comes up, we can revisit it, see if it changes, we change. Taking what you, is a lot. I feel more comfortable voting on, voting on.
Brad, did you have comments on that at all?
The sirens plan, which kind of detailed, sounds pretty reasonable to me. I don't have a strong, a way, but it's pretty responsible and agreeable to our director of administration. So I'd like to probably see it on that front.
What are your feelings, Slim?
I'm good either way.
How about Chief?
First time, you want to have that sort of sensory situation, use it, use it without it, without it, it's a women's statute, statute.
Well, this came up because you had vehicle purchases that had been appropriated, but...
Through the budget, but then we had to have a special meeting to get the voucher to issue. First, why, why do you prove, do you prove? Our company, our company.
The only thing I'd like to raise is emergency. If we had to go past, go past that, my first, my first thought is all you guys, all you guys, you need to change your jeans. I'll pay a, I'll pay a call to you guys.
Would we, would we, kind of picking back, you know, what Richard said, we want to differentiate between general expenditures versus asset-based expenditures. Leave it at 50, so that things like, when the chief needs orders, police cars, that we've already appropriated the money for him to buy police cars. He doesn't have to come back for us. Make a distinction between asset or general expenditures. General expenditures or, is that probably really complicated?
I think it's a little complicated right now, just on the basis that we moved around so much. My understanding is, I, in fact, I have a recommendation, maybe general purchases and asset purchases may be defined a little bit. But I'm also leaning towards like what Carmen has said, you know, maybe we have a structure point. And we have an understanding that if there's an emergency, there is, you know, you know, nobody's going to get your hands slapped or anything like that. Not trying to micromanage, but I don't know, you put some sort of language in there for emergencies type thing, if you have a structure, or you just roll with.
We just roll, we just roll.
Well, the problem is, if you don't authorize it, it gets spent in statutory problems, violating statutes.
But you could write it, and say, an emergency can be taken care of by the workers, and then, and then without any repercussion from the council. If they had to spend over a certain mile, because we got to protect them too, because they got to do their job. And in the middle, and at 2:00, if you need to get a valve put in, it's $36,000, then you have to do it. There's just no way, so I think we need something in there to protect you guys on emergency, this is the process. Does that make sense to you guys? And then that way, you're protected.
You never know when a utility happens, you've never had to get council approval for that.
Well, yeah, because utilities start by budget law, or anything, there's a lot of statute on utilities.
So all in all, I mean, I think we're, our objective was to have communication and dialogue about something we didn't have. Clearly, we're conversing and socializing about this. So with that being said, and based off Carmen's recommendation and kind of what's proposed, so do we ask Carmen to maybe redo this and resubmit for next month?
This is first reading, you can amend the ordinance in a first reading. And then come back for final reading with the amendments that you want.
But I would want, I would want, how you wanted to amend.
Correct, correct. And I'm not really sure based off of what Carmen had made a recommendation of.
Can, can, we can sit down and sit down like you're, like if this is just an asset versus a general operation, I kind of, I kind of, not that we're going to, not that we're going to restrict by saying, by saying, ask them to listen and listen.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
We'll ask that, we'll ask that. But, um, we can sit down and sit down in some language.
That would help me, yes, honestly.
Is that fair for everyone? I mean, we're not, I mean, we're not in a situation where we need to make a decision, right?
So I guess, I guess, I think to make sure, we don't end up having to reintroduce this. I would make a motion to amend. To go back to the tier structure, the director of administration, to us on the record. Rather than the $50,000 cap. And that would be my motion.
And I'll second it.
So that is your motion?
Mm-hmm, mm-hmm.
Okay, so Mr. Saylor made a motion, and Mr. Brown seconded. Take a roll call, please.
Tim Brown, Brad Goodecker, Deborah Hendrickson?
Yes, yes.
Richard Hill?
Yes.
So Saylor?
Yes.
Fast five to zero.
So we'll just take this up as amended down our next meeting. I think, I think.
Carmen, I apologize for all the backing.
I would use, I would use.
Um, rolling in, new item, new business, ordinance 2024, Fishborne Estate.
So this, so this, uh, uh, this, this, um, base, this, uh, this, uh, this, this, this , I want, I want to, I want, so, so, and, 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 uh, uh, property, property, and there was a portion, that there was a parcel that, um, was part of, part of, one, or one in, in, or 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 in,